...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, free, to be and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning. All meeting to order through the agenda?
Go move.
I'll second. Any discussion? All favorit?
Aye.
All saying?
Motion to approve the minute, they look good.
Second?
Second.
All favorit?
Aye.
All saying? General public, who wants to start? We've got a pile of lot here.
I'll start by saying, Ron called me the other day and was questioning some of the road out there by Braden, or Badger, excuse me, Bradgate.
Okay.
And I said, well, I just looked through the agenda and we don't have a whole lot on the schedule for Monday, so if you and John want to come in and I guess we could visit about what we're thinking about, so...
As far as, it's on the list for us to start hauling rock too, um, to try and repair, uh, it's one of the last roads that water come off the road as far as the river. Um, we still have signs out there for rough road, but, uh, it's passable, I drove through it on Thursday. I don't know what you want for discussion.
Well, do you guys wanna?
Well, I guess basically the problem I've got is when John called in requesting some rock to, you know, fill that hole in, granted, there was still water over the road.
Right.
But, they need to get in and out because of fly stalk and everything else. So, why, you know, what we paying taxes for if we can't get some rock out to go ahead and fill by then?
So you openly wanted us to haul rock on a road that had the river going over it?
Yes. There was, there was a way to fill there that you could put some ballast in.
That's not our policy. No. I mean, if the river's going over the road, it's not our responsibility to be able to get you access to your property. I mean, this isn't a brand-new problem, you've known this, you lived out there before John did.
Yeah. And we didn't have this as bigger problem until you guys cleaned all the ditches out up there. What you're getting now is river coming across and it's starting to waterfall and washes back across the road every time.
So if the ditch was level full?
It'd go right on across.
Without?
They weren't, they weren't level full before, but you guys have cleaned out there several different times and the last time you took it down at least three feet.
The last time was fifteen years ago?
Yeah, twelve, twelve years ago.
This is one of my first years here.
And look, look how many times you guys have been out there to prepare the roads since, too.
Can't stop Mother Nature.
Well?
I don't know, it's, it's a problem road, it's always been a problem road for us, it's by Bradgate, it's notorious for flooding. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. There, there's no solution.
There is a-
We just wanna build the road up six, seven feet and then flood Bradgate.
No, we don't wanna do that.
Or make a viaduct around there.
Yeah.
I think, honestly, we've had more severe flooding these past several years. I mean, honestly.
I mean, normally you're not shut out of your property for as long as you have with this stretch, if I'm, if I'm right. You know, usually the river comes up and within a few days it goes back down.
There's probably two times, it's been five, six weeks at a time, but at least you can get through because the road is still passable. This time it worked out enough that they needed to fill that hole in so they could get in and out.
Like I said, there was still the river going over it, I talked to my foreman both times, they did not advise to haul material to it, uh, the one day they wanted us to haul ballast and spread it with a skid loader. That just doesn't make sense.
It worked, then?
I understand, but the, the number of man-hours that you're talking about to-
It took me forty-five minutes.
I mean, if you guys wanna create a policy where we start hauling rock on roads that the river is running over it, you know, we can look at that, but otherwise, I still feel like we did the right thing.
Well, we weren't expecting you to go out and spread it. He offered to spread it, you guys just, we just asked to have some rock delivered out there so we could go ahead and fill it.
Well, this is something we can discuss at a later date. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
It's a one-off deal, um, yeah, sympathetic of flooding for everybody and then that's a rough spot. I mean, I still, I mean, I'm not a meteorologist, but I believe we have had higher, more flooding issues that obviously makes this area worse.
But this road floods every year.
It does, and you guys know more than anybody because you've been out there forever.
And they're gonna, they're compounding the problem too, because almost everything up in Minnesota is patting down now, so you're gonna get a lot more water coming down the river than you have in the past years.
Yeah.
And I've never had the kids trying to stop the flooding and stuff anyway, who know that's a little flood plain over there and it's gonna go down through it.
Yeah.
But this idea that you've got now on the upper end of it, raising the road from Lubenthal's house on into Bradgate, you're gonna create more problems.
I don't know if that's, how would that create actually more problem? I think the-
You're dam, you're gonna dam off the water out there, then you're either gonna run it back into Bradgate or you're gonna send it all around and come back out around the south side across my place again.
I don't-
But Mother Nature's trying to take a natural path, once you comes out, the river comes out and it comes down across there and it has for hundreds of years. Like I said, you're not gonna stop it, but you can't go out there and, and screw it up by raising the road and, and stuff again too, especially if you're not gonna put culverts under it to relieve the pressure.
I know you guys are gonna go out there and do some investigating, take a look at it.
Well, we went out and surveyed it and I guess the original plan was for us to, uh, dig about a three-foot ditch through there and put some culverts through it and, and possibly raise the road up a bit, but obviously with the meeting that we had out there with Lubenthal's, they didn't want that.
Well, the whole gist of it is to make an improvement. It's not to make it worse, you know, that's-
Right.
And that's-
I mean, the, the whole, the whole gist of the, of the project was to try and create a road that would make it so that John could get into his property from the Bradgate side and make it so that Lubenthal could get to his property on the Bradgate side.
Yep.
And get the water to positively drain off the road, I mean, if you're out there now in every one of those curves, you've got standing water still sitting. Uh, so I guess the, the, the plan has been changing, uh, with every meeting and basically what we've resorted to now is where we're basically just gonna dig about a one-foot swell up each side of the road, just enough to get positive drainage off the road so that it'll dry up and be passable. Um, I don't know that we're gonna be able to raise the road a whole lot for the exact reasons Ron said, if we raise it too much, we're gonna be forcing water, more water into Bradgate or more water on these guys. I mean, what we were talking about recently was putting about three inches of ballast down and another two or four inches of rock down, you know. We've got room that we could raise it six inches down by your quarry without affecting anything because there's four or five foot of fall from the elevator all the way down to your quarry. So that six inches for a couple hundred feet isn't gonna change much.
And taking that one foot out isn't gonna gain you a thing because of Lubenthal's place, that's the high point and it goes north from there and south from there.
Correct, yeah.
So, one foot isn't gonna gain you a thing except you're gonna open them ditch up and then cause the road to wash out a lot of them too.
Well, all we're trying to do is create enough positive drainage so the water won't run off the road.
It's a little hard to-
Right.
Instead of sitting in the water.
Flooding is-
That's, that's all that one foot is, is planning on doing, it's not even deep enough that we can stick culverts under the road, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but like I said, that, that road has been like that over there for hundreds of years, I don't know why would you change that? We've ever had going out the west way, once one of the deer cross one and hell, any road in the county could get those.
Oh, yeah, everyone-
We did.
Going out the west way, there's never been a mouse.
I don't know, there's enough resistance to this, but we can just scrap it.
Well-
I mean, we were trying to do something positive.
That's why I say I'm, I'm on them side because on the flip side, and not you guys per se, you're specific to your concern with the flooding and that, but otherwise, the folks that use that road, it's tough to maintain a road that doesn't have any positive drainage, like Benson. I'm talking flooding aside, I'm talking rain events that don't flood, that we're not talking the rivers running across it. It does not allow the water to get off the road, it's very difficult to-
The road is lower than the field.
Very difficult to maintain the road and so then we get the call and, well, this road is just degraded. Yes, it is, and, and there's other roads, maybe not as severe, where they don't have positive drainage, they don't have a good crown, they degrade, and they're trying to do something positive to, to maintain that road and, like Benson, I don't blame him. I mean, feels like you're trying to improve something and nobody wants, they don't want you to improve it, but I pretty well guarantee you that without a little bit of improvement, we're gonna get the concern, well, this road is all miserable again.
Well, like, like Ron said, I mean, the road hasn't changed for a hundred years and every year we get phone calls about this stretch of road.
And you were, you were trying to-
Yeah, from multiple people.
Be proactive and, and improve it a little bit.
Right, I mean, we looked at the map and we said, okay, where do we get most of our phone calls complaining about the condition of the road? This was one of them, so we started looking at what can we do that's not gonna cost us a whole lot that we can do, that we could possibly improve the road? Well, we could look at cleaning the ditch and possibly raising the grade of the road a foot or so. Um, like I said, we, we met with Lubenthal's, they were against that, um, but he will, you know, he did say that he would stay out of the right of way if we put some stakes out there because basically right now he's weaving around all of our signs, um, you know, and now meeting with you guys, it sounds like you're against it, uh, because you're, you're worried about it washing the road out to the west if we dig any kind of ditch or if we raise the road up too much.
I really think you're gonna cause more of a problem around west way, I guess if you look back on the complaints that you had and all that, basically, most of your complaints have been from my place east. They've not been around the road along west in your direction.
Uh, most of the complaint, I guess most of the complaints from you guys have been to the east, most of the complaints from Lubenthal's have been west of your place.
Right there in between the curves where it gets the dance off.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that's where we're trying to get the water off because if you go through them curves, like even right now, there's standing water there-
Right.
-on the road and, and in the curves, so.
That's our biggest concern was if you dig the ditches out, then it's gonna wash there. I mean, if there's, if you make a happy medium where it just, you can slope it further away from the road, so if it does flood, it's gradual instead of boiling.
Right, instead of digging a three-foot ditch, like you've got east of your place where when it comes through, it cuts the road out, you know.
Ron, I think you hit the nail on the head. The conversation with Lubenthal's led to looking for a happy medium.
Yeah.
Because there's, and that's why Ben went out and, and he just explained it, because there's so much issue there with the maintenance of the road. Forget the river flooding, the river never floods, say, you know, it doesn't, it's not the flooding, it's the road. You can't, when it's low and flat, no crown and no ditch, it's very hard to maintain-
If it rains, it's crap.
Yep. In any other place, and Ben knows this better than anybody, that the roads degrade, you're in a similar situation. You, you don't have positive drainage, you don't have a good crown, you don't have a good act, you know, method for the water to drain off the road. The road, the best roads in our county have a decent crown, a decent ditch, the water gets off them when it rains and they're easy, pretty easy to maintain.
Right.
And that's what we're looking for.
They don't have the west branch that you want.
Right, I'm saying you gotta take the flooding aside, this is just getting to the maintenance of the road is what you're looking for, so.
Right.
I think the happy medium thing is still a route to go with this, uh, because leaving it like it is, is, is not probably quite correct.
I'm, I'm, you're not gonna freeze me out, believe me.
What are you gonna do with water just down to my pit down there? Because that dish coming down, we're just gonna dump it off, there's no culvert going on, on the eastern end?
Right, and if you look at, uh, I guess historically, even there right now, I mean, there's plenty of water sitting in that field, but it's all sand underneath. Where the water goes is basically down, you know, so originally we looked at, uh, putting an intake down there by the quarry and running up, uh, eight-inch tile through Lubenthal's property to dump in the river, but the more we looked at it, we're not gonna get that tree in, or that three-foot ditch that we were talking about, so even if we're talking about getting a one-foot ditch, you don't need the water to run anywhere, it's just gonna go down as the water table goes down. And it's not a deep enough ditch where you look at even putting cross pipes under the road now because, I mean, usually when we put a culvert under the road, the smallest that we do is like twenty-four inch, uh, and, you know, you're not talking-
Twenty-four to twenty-four hundred.
Right, yeah.
Well, I know that forty-two that we put to our lane up there, it made a big difference when we put it down on the cross there too.
Well-
It took a lot of pressure off and nothing goes out, washes out, gives them a lane there now either.
And I think we need to look at putting a cross pipe then right in the corner east to your place, uh, where it does go to eat this, it's not gonna, it's not gonna eliminate it because, you know, we're talking the west branch of the river, but it might alleviate some of those.
You mean we're not gonna have the I-road, the I-Lo?
Well, it sounds like this road is kinda like a no-win situation and you can only do little things to possibly make it better, it's never gonna be a good, ideal road. So we just gotta find out some kinda solution that'll just come to whatever will be kind of good for Ben and good for you guys then, right?
We're, I, I mean, ultimately, everything that we're doing is trying to make this road better for you guys and for Lubenthal's and everybody that's using it, I mean, we're trying to eliminate our phone calls about the road, but we're trying to make it a better road for them, so.
And we are just saying going to the fall about, you know, cleaning out the ditches as much as they did east of our place, that it was gonna cause a problem, well, ever since they've done it, how many war shots have you had to fix up there?
Yeah, I, I know of, uh-
At least four.
Yeah, I was gonna say at least four in twelve, fourteen years, so. But I don't know how many they had before that, I mean, that, that's just my time here.
Well, close to everyone worst out before was right at the end of our lane and we took the pressure off by putting that big culvert through and it doesn't come out and swirl around the end of the lane and wash out there now. Now everything is east. Get about two more holes, you're gonna have enough ballast in there, it won't wash out, so.
Yeah. You tear the road up and build it with ballast, they go.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why I invited them, because I didn't have any of the answers that, I just figured it's easiest way, we didn't have a big schedule, so why am I supposed-
I don't have any of the answers.
I know you don't, and that's, I think that's what they're searching for, it's just a little compromise to figure out what we can do, so.
Right.
Try little things here and there just to make it possibly a little better.
No, and I talked with William and I guess about basically bringing in some ballast from the corner over to your place and then putting some brush rock on top of that, you know, because it is pretty rough right now. I mean, it, it is passable, but it is rough.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the problem is, it's all sand underneath that, you know, and the one big blowout that we had five, six years ago, you know, was the size of the pickup.
Yeah, that's horrible.
Yeah, um, but we'll try and get some ballast or something on top of that and then get some, get some rock on top and try and build it up so that hopefully, even if the rock does wash off, the ballast will stay. Maybe that's gonna be ideal, right?
It is gonna need some pipe repaired there by the trail too. I think there's two on the east side of the road are sloping off and stopping the over out.
So I can pick it up and try to tie it, uh, bad repair on that, so. Okay, I'll make a look for that one.
I mean, like you and I love to, here's to put a bigger one over on the trail type as well. The water does come down against that side and then back around, so if you had a bigger one over, uh, we tried doing it before when they, uh, put it in as just the trail, and I guess the railroad was in opposition to it then.
We don't have that problem.
Right. So if you could put a big one through there, that'd take a lot of pressure off your little pipes down here too.
Okay. I, I can take a look at it, you know, I mean, the water's going down now and I don't know that there's much in the ditch anymore that I can actually get in there and look at it.
Let's look it all over, see what we can do with it. Okay? Anybody else?
Tim.
Yeah, I was wondering if, I talked to Ben about it and I talked to you, I don't think four years ago there had been no coal on my road.
Um, sorry, you have to tell me which road.
Florida.
West Florida and there.
You know by Friday when I was blown out of the lane?
Okay.
You know I was off it, well, the road's below the, just below the field.
You live above the, in Murray Bridge, right?
Huh?
You live above the Murray Bridge?
Sorry, Tim, I didn't recognize you at first, okay?
That's all right, Ben.
Tim?
It's, uh, it was brought up, I don't know, like three, four years ago.
Yep.
So, but there's no ditch.
We had it listed as a grading project here, yeah, like Tim said, probably three, four years ago and it was tied with, uh-
A road over on the west.
A one-mile stretch of road over west on One Hundred Ninetieth Street. Uh, I went out, did all the survey, did the design, uh, we had a letting, somewhere between the letting we had on Wednesday or Thursday and Monday morning, they opted to, uh, reject all bids and, uh, cancel the projects, so, uh, Tim's right, yeah, I mean, the, the field is higher and the ditch is higher than the road on both sides and basically it's about a mile and a quarter, mile and a half stretch of, of roller coaster right now with frost boils, so.
But in the wintertime it's, I'm blown in and I've had cold brews and I just blow myself out, I gotta get to the highway, but, I mean, it's kind of a pisser in the wintertime.
I guess we've talked about it and brought it up, uh, during five-year plan work sessions about possibly bringing Tim's back onto the, the five-year plan, and, uh, at this point it's not on the five-year plan.
Well, the one that, that was tied to was on a mile section of road that no one lived on and that was, I think, the biggest reason why-
There was, there's, there's a, we got it lives-
The border of it.
The west end.
Right.
Um, I don't remember the details of it as far as how much the project was bid for, um, yeah, I know there was one property owner over on that stretch that was opposed to the project.
Well, I don't look at it, I didn't think it needed to be done, that's why I voted against it, but I wanted to split it, but we couldn't split it at the time.
After the, it was already put together.
I'm not a, opposed to racing Florida at all, that, that needs to be done, I've been with it that multiple times, because I can see your point, in the wintertime it's below the fields, it blows in.
Yeah.
And then the spring it's wet and no drainage and-
Then will you still call me then, when, when you can get out, you'll call to tell me that you got out?
I mean, I mean, thanks for using-
I know, I, I'm not arguing that point, but usually I can just tell by how bad the snow is, it's how quick your call comes.
And-
And how deep.
The bank has fallen in on the west side of the-
Again?
Of my place, it's dropped another foot.
The river.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's right-
That whole hill.
It's just wide.
Slide down towards the river.
Yeah, but it's, it just got again, me and wife were just out there yesterday.
My guess is the road's gonna fail before the bridge does.
Well, really, it's just that the road's a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
The road is just gonna move to a new location.
Yeah, my guess is that road eventually will be popping up on the east side of your acreage.
Oh, okay.
And we'll just move it further away from, from the river. I mean, I, I apply every year for special funding to replace that bridge, it's gonna be a million and a half.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and we change the alignment, probably run straight north by Martin Brown's along the power line, but, uh, uh, as of yet, we can't get them jumped over by bigger cities with more traffic on our bridges.
In New York.
And I did tell Dean-
Not yet, sure.
To switch this from Gilmore Dome when that goes off. Let me tell him.
What's that now?
With the emergency, tell him, Gilmore City.
Yeah.
Emily, I ask your last name for the-
Cleveland.
Cleveland, okay, thank you.
You can call anytime though.
I think he does.
He can. Call him, see him on the road somewhere.
Yeah, I yell him on the CP.
Keep y'all on that, him, that's-
Yeah. Okay.
I'm looking for a driveway of grades, uh, Washington Avenue, uh, I'm riding out a little by Vernon, and Vernon's fourteen, uh, we're putting up the hog building now. And, uh, I contacted Dave Powell, he said that you only allow driveway for hog sites, if that's correct.
Yeah, typically.
Yeah, but there's already existing driveway in that corner and, uh, I also share that driveway with the eighty south of there, so I'd like to leave that one there and put one, actually one for hog sites.
So where's it at on fourteen, uh?
Half section line, yeah. Roger Hanson, that, that, uh, that southwest corner's where the hog house is gonna be and there's already a driveway right in that corner. I'm just looking to put one up just a little ways. I share that driveway with Leader Farm also.
Has Dave outlooked at, you know?
Yeah, I just got, he called, he's the one told me to come, so.
Oh.
Yeah, he said if, you guys don't allow one, you want a driveway for hog site.
I think that's listed on the back for permit, yeah.
Yeah. He had no trouble with it, he just said it's not a rule seal, but, uh, I guess it's intentional, so.
This isn't, the guy, whoever's putting this in isn't that guy from over east that we always have problems with this.
What's that?
Who's doing it?
We're still having to work.
All of us have to work.
Oh.
I'm the way to call them.
Uh, 'cause we've had the issues with this guy.
New modern concept.
That's it.
Yeah.
New modern. They always wanna put the ditch, or put the tube in and bury it and then we'll come back and fix it later and then it's not to the elevation and then we-
Yeah, I understand all the rules there and I've put them in before for myself. I know, I understand the soul and all that stuff. That's not the issue, this is just giving the variance.
Giving the variance for an additional drive.
Yeah, I'm asking, and I understand the rules, I understand, if it's not ready, you guys have to, you guys have to make it up, I understand all that.
So, so the existing driveway?
The existing driveway is split between two eighties.
Right.
And I still use that on my other, on my other eightie.
Yes.
So I'm not, it's not riding a semi to come in and pee or whatever and come out of that, so I wanna put one in the right spot for just the hog house.
Well, this existing driveway isn't gonna be used in conjunction with the hog setup then?
No, it's not actually gonna be for the hogs.
Oh.
It's still gonna be there, but it's, it's in the corner, so I'm gonna use it more than the, the hogs.
Okay, so the one you're asking for is to have for the hog site, the, the new driveway?
Yes, yes.
And I see that where you're looking, you're right.
This is split right here, the Hanson, Roger Hanson and-
Here's your driveway right now?
Yep, it's, 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 I use it for both, both farms.
Yep. And your new driveway is proposed and moved?
Maybe like, you know, like two hundred feet this direction.
Because your hog site's going here?
Hog site's in the corner of this, this, it, uh, I use it every-
Yeah, you do that.
Here's the five acres right here, so I'm gonna put that like right here.
Okay.
So, this is almost, almost like a double-wide driveway here, but it's half on this, this space here and it's been there forever, but.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense. I've seen something similar.
Sometimes they, they pull the other half out, sometimes they don't. Well, Dave mentioned that and I, he still utilized that, well, you know, I couldn't know how big it is anymore, still utilize that to get out of the farm, so I don't just wanna take it out.
Yeah.
I don't have to. I don't have to. It's already there.
I've got one right down the road from me that's almost identical to this and I, I don't see an issue with it.
No, and it's not uncommon for, you know, these hog setups where the guys wanna be able to pull it in and do the little people out of another driveway. I mean,
It is, it isn't
There's three things for that.
It isn't actually even that. I, I, it's just very coincidental. It's a shared field driveway. The hog setup is just, and, and they utilize the drive, they needed the drive for the hog setup, but they only use the drive for the hog setup. They don't utilize the
Yeah, I don't see
I don't see an issue with it. I really don't.
So we need to put that on for the agenda for an agendaized items or?
Yes, you would. You need to have an action.
I think we're getting the look.
With the variance.
Yeah, that, thank you for asking though.
Yeah, yeah, I just want me
You didn't go with the theory of a lot of people that put it in and then beg for forgiveness? You'd like to ask for permission? We appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
So does he need to go in and get on the agenda for next week?
Probably.
Have this approved?
Yeah.
So, uh, when you say that, I mean, I have to come back to it?
No, no, you shouldn't have to come back.
Just put on the agenda what you just asked for and then we can approve it.
Variance, driveway variance for a section or whatever.
Your wa, your wife will have to make cookies for the next month.
Well.
Or maybe a cake.
Or a cake, yeah, we, we're not really particular. We have a sweet tooth.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect.
I could've gone short and it would've been like yours. I'm adjusting.
Ah, you're doing fine. You're doing fine.
Awesome.
Okay, Gary, you got anything?
No, I'm bored.
Too wet to do it?
Hey, it needed some entertainment, huh?
Well, I, I wouldn't get on drainage, drainage system.
Alright.
Well, we move right along. Time to approve the claims.
A little quick, I'm sorry, hold on. And I put that over here?
Yes, this, yep, next week's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I looked at the claims and the numbers for general were two fifty-four, five seventy-nine, ninety is what I come up with. And drainage was seventeen, three, seven, eight, point two three. I'd make a motion.
That's what I had. I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion?
Can I have some quick, no discussion? I don't disagree with the numbers. Just, uh, Bruce made a note, the, on the rock and I asked him and he said he was concerned that if there's rock that would be FEMA assistance related. And I said, I thought, I'm sure you're keeping track of it.
Pretty much everything out of that rock budget, or that rock that was hauled on this claim will be built against FEMA.
There you go. That was only
I just, rather than try to chase it at the end when we
Oh, no.
I figured you
We've been filling out day labor sheets.
Figured you've been down this road before.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you're just doing
We just had a FEMA event back in June.
Yeah, I know.
There was no way we could say
That was only, that was a question on that for that, so we're good.
Alright.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Karen. Accept and place on file the auditor's quarterly report. Copy of it?
Yep. Kent, would you like a copy also? I'm gonna send that down to Kent. Brought in a total of three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents um, this quarter.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the auditor's quarterly report.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
This is listed on her dog license?
Yes.
You actually get it, ever get dog license?
No, but we used to and it's just a standard, it's on
Okay, it's a standard form. I just, this question, I didn't think that of all the things that
Well, license your dog will let you.
I know, I know. I think it is, but, uh, of all the things that go in the auditor's, I just was checking, you really do?
Dog licenses do.
You used to, but not anymore.
And I will make a comment being as where the city of Humboldt does provide licenses for anyone in the county who wants to license their dog. It has a little, uh, barcode type thing on there. You read it with your phone. And it'll tell you right away whose dog it is. You just scan it and tells you the owner and the location.
That's a good idea then.
And their vaccinations.
And besides the fact then they won't have to post it on Facebook and hope that somebody notices the dog that's been noticed and
Awesome remark. Yeah, it's a really good thing for people to do.
Yeah.
When mine breaks out.
Everybody know your dog.
My dog is
Criminal.
Yeah, he's a criminal.
He's an escape artist.
Yep.
Gets through the fence. He found out it was working yesterday. Grandkids run the other side.
Torments from the dog.
Okay, any discussion possible action on flying drainage ditches?
Did we vote on that?
Hmm?
Did we vote on that?
No.
I don't think we did.
We did.
Somebody interrupted the question.
Yeah.
But we voted on dog licenses.
Okay, we'll back up. All in favor of the quarterly report?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same, okay.
We don't want the auditor to get in trouble.
Somebody interrupted.
Well, it was a good point about dog licenses, so.
Okay, yeah, it was. Now we'll go down to flying the drainage ditch, ditches.
Well, I was visiting with, um, I called and talked to Dave Dodge in the other day. Because
Watch me the box.
One needs drone over however much and seeing it's two hundred, uh, mile for one and a hundred and whatever for the other. So I just asked Dave, um, I said, how long would it take to crisscross the county both directions? And, you know, from an airplane, we could get a better visual on these ditches and then possibly go back and check if we see something. Said it could be done in a matter of hours. And he said, he was gonna be out of town till tomorrow, I think, but he said, uh, I'd consider doing it. And he said, he, his plane's big enough that, he said, a couple of you guys wanna fly with him and uh, the more eyes you have, the better you can see. And he said, he tried to pick a day where it's decent. Turbulence isn't bad, cause he said it doesn't bother him, but it, well, I don't know who's gonna go with you. Cause I'm really not a fan of flying.
He didn't volunteer, did he?
No, I'm, small planes and me, just, I'm not a real fan, but, um, I just think that if we checked it, we could get it more eyes on a lot of different areas that we, it might be a quicker way. And I'm not saying we just do away with the drones, but at least we could see that, you know, if something down in one area. So I just said I'd bring it, or I called and talked to Dave to put it on the agenda to see if we could, what you guys' thoughts are. Then we could always pull it, have one of the drones go over there and fly it if we see something sagging. I talked to Trish also, the, I was going up to Addison off the block top there. What is that number? I don't
That is, the eleven, is that eleven by Addison?
It's just south of, or north side of the Badger, or Bridegate Blacktop.
Oh.
Yes.
The drainage district, seven, I think.
Well, right there, a hundred feet in, there's two places that it looks like it's starting to sag a little bit, that I can see from the semi. I started looking at all these now when I, trying to see if you can see a visual of anything that So those are the things that I think that from an airplane, we could see. And then if we Dave said a couple of hours, he could have them basically fly in both directions and get a look at it. And if you see something, you come back around and check it. Then, cause she said, what is his name again?
Phil Jacob.
Yeah, Phil's gonna have to go out there and physically take a picture of him sometime anyway. So I'm, I'm just throwing it out there as a possible. I don't, I haven't, we haven't signed anything, uh
I think it's possible, but I want, I investigated a little bit more with McPhor, since remember he couldn't get his presentation up. So he sent me the link and said to look at it and I did. I'm very impressed. I don't know if, I sent it to your email. I don't know what your luck, I don't wanna spend the rest of the morning trying to hook up our technology. But I don't know if that's possible, or you have your laptop that, that we could just look on the laptop possibly? If we wanna see an example. Yet, that, you know, one picture is worth a thousand words and example's probably worth five. And now I understand, I said, it's too bad you didn't get to show this. It makes a lot of sense how they, uh, do their investigative drone work. And it's very specific and precise to where the locations are. When they fly it, it does pictures, but there's a map, virtual map, and if you are, either you click on the picture that's goofed up and they actually will do a lot of this work previous, say on a dredge ditch, you know what they look like. There'll be a flag, if you will, icon, that's a bad spot. And the picture tied to it and the GPS location tied to it.
And that's what with you.
And that's what it is. It's, uh, very handy. Trish is right. Phil has to physically for FEMA things, look at it, document it. It denotes it right then and there, once they get the drone flight and compile the information. So I was, I thought, man, this, I'd like everyone to see it, but what we've talked about, what we need to look at, what we need to, uh, document the bad areas. That's exactly what it does. So it's really good. Because if we run into drone flights, just take the drone for example, and even a beautiful picture of the dredge ditch all along with the drone. And yes, it's, uh, you know, reference section by section by section, so it doesn't take a whole lot to figure out where the bad spot is. But still takes a little bit of discerning. It's in this section, it's by this curb, you know, we gotta figure out exactly. We gotta get Phil out there to do that. This is, this documents it. I mean, it, it was really slick. So I would pursue that. I'd like to get the example that, you know, we talked last week of the two drainage, uh, district, ditches for them to fly, cause like I said
I, I think we should proceed with it because it's, it's good documentation of the conditions of the ditches. And we have it on record for a few, very few dollars per acre cost. It'd be pennies per acre.
Yes, and this one, if there is something at the time they do the flight, it's all
I disagree, Gary.
I disagree totally with what's going on. I know you guys are saying you're gonna get this all paid for by FEMA. Well, maybe, maybe not.
No, I'm not saying it's all paid for. I just want the documentation
Okay, what are you gonna do the next time? Are you gonna have to go up, pay another two hundred dollars a mile for him to go over the same spot? To see the difference between this year and next year? Are you gonna do that every year? And all that cost comes back to those of us in the drainage district. And that's what gets me. I mean, I can, I can draw, I can video my whole mile in five minutes or less. And I'm taking it right down to the top of the drainage ditch and flying that and I can see every little spot. Now you're talking of doing it on DD six, that's my district and branch B, or branch A, which are gonna, from petition to clean out. Okay, they've already went down each side of the ditch with four wheelers and marked every tube that's broke off and flagged it in the size of tube that's gonna be needed there. Those guys have seen what that ditch is. You wouldn't have to even do the video of it because they've already done all the six and six main. You know, if you told it, no, I don't know if it was Hopper or whether it was, or whether it was Yemland doing it. Because I called Rick and he didn't know anything about flagging the tubes and that, so he didn't know what was going on down there. And he said they hadn't in there again. I guess you've assigned it to Yemland to do the clean out and you haven't even surveyed it to know what the cost is gonna be to clean it. And my whole mile is clean as a whistle. There's no slough offs, but if you go on six main to the east there on the road, it looks like there might be some slough offs there. And then around the corner of Roosevelt, there's a couple of little ones, but I've got a picture here of the lousy job the guy did to fix that one last year, that slough off. He pulled it out, dumped it on the edge of the road, uh, field and got some ballast in and half the ballast is still laying on top of the field. So I mean, I don't think he should be doing any more work. I'll, I haven't talked to Trish about it yet. I just got the picture the other day, but I, I just don't see doing it all. I mean, it, it don't take that much to drive, ride down a long one with a three, or with a ATV and see where the slough offs are. And, and then if you have something you need to video, then video it, but not to blanketly do the whole thing. I mean, that's, that's a cost. And then you're talking, okay, two hundred dollars a mile to video it. That's over there, McPhor. And then, then to do what the other technical work is, what's it gonna come up to?
That is, that's, that's included. That's
That was the total cost.
But you know, you take any of these drones now and you go flying down there and it gives you the GPS as you fly along. So all you gotta do is stop, click the picture when you hit a spot and it'll give you the GPS and everything too, so.
And, and that's what they're doing. That's what, that's what the plan is, so that you have a record of it.
But those of us that live on the ditch and, and take, you know, see it every day, there's no need to be videoing it and charging us for that extra.
Hey, then as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't have to do it.
FEMA doesn't go by what you say. They, they want documentation.
Well, okay, if there's
That's the reason, that's the reason we're doing it, is for record, for two years from now, if we have another event, they can go back and look and say, this is what it was like before. This is what it looks like now.
You're, you're, you're assuming, you're assuming FEMA's gonna pay for all this.
The flying of them? Probably not for all of it, no. Because if there's no damage, they won't be paying for any of it.
Yeah.
But it's, it's also a record.
But then to, then to check that record, you're gonna have to redo it again to check the record.
Probably sometime
At least that cost, they don't come out of the board of supervisors budget.
No. Comes out of my pocket though, cause I'm doing a ditch of mine.
Yeah.
Well, the, that's a good point and I understand, we don't like to spend money just for the fun of it, to have drone footage, but right now, we have been declared a FEMA disaster area. So it's for certain that in drainage ditches and districts, if it's documented cause from that disaster, the major flooding water that we got declared for, yes, they do pay for it. And particularly on
And if we find one or two that don't get caught, it
That is covered. Exactly what I wanted to bring up from Brick's point. And if you look at, well, District eleven, for example, which is a huge district. That it, it sounds really good that someone's gonna drive along it with the four wheeler. But, I mean, you might, but the guy in the other district, they may not catch that. And it's a ten thousand dollar area that repaired between culvert, sloughing, holes, who knows what the water can really do a lot of damage. That gets missed, doesn't get turned into FEMA, the district's paying for that.
Well, I understand.
The district's paying for that and I don't know what's the cost here on FEMA, Trish? So ten thou, I'm just gonna use
Other, as they not are.
But you gotta get Phil out there to look at it and document it and it's a whole lot of fun documentation. But if it goes through like that, they do pay seventy-five percent of these repairs. And if you don't have the documentation and they don't sign off on it, or you don't catch it, the district is definitely gonna pay for it, cause it's definitely gonna have to be fixed.
And I realize with the absentee landlords that are around there, if the tenant doesn't pay attention to it or don't give an errand. I mean, yeah, you can have issues like that.
Yep. And that's what we're trying to alleviate and we're trying to getting some examples, if you will, of ways to document those.
We're gonna do a few ditches and look at them and see, are we wasting our time or is this, we're not doing the whole county. We're doing a few ditches that we recently cleaned out, cause those are, those are more susceptible. And then we're gonna look at it and evaluate it and see if we need to do more or not.
Well, see branch A is six, you're gonna be doing that one and surveying it, so you don't need
They're not, they're not doing that one, cause their cops are said there, there's no need to do it, cause they've already done it. So.
And yes, they are surveying it too.
Yeah, they are surveying it, but they already did a drone fight on it back earlier this winter or last fall. I guess, for, just for their own personal use.
And my idea was if you had flowed the whole county with an airplane and you see something, you could do it for a couple of hundred dollars.
That's what I was gonna ask, what's the, what's the cost of the airplane?
Couple hundred dollars.
Which is two hundred dollars a mile.
That's what he said. And he said, a couple of you wanna ride and fly with me to get, um, more eyes on it? You can see it, then go look at it and
That sounds like a good interior.
I'm, I, I know, I'm not gonna argue about it, but he offered to do it. So I just thought, well, I'd bring it up.
That might be a cheaper route to go and then if we do see something, have the drone, the drone, the drone fly, the areas that we see are bad.
Well, I can shake, I'm going, supposed to be on my way to Jewel, down there along to that ethanol plant, that dredge ditch that runs along there. You ought to see it. It's over a half mile of it. It's all dropped and, and I said something to Doug. I said, have you guys looked at that? They, he didn't know anything about it. So those are the things that we're trying to just be a little upfront and get it done, cause our sand is running in the glass. We have a certain amount of days.
Yeah, and that's
Sixty days from only, isn't it?
Getting back to that FEMA thing.
And I'm not, I'm not, I think it's a fine idea if you, I'm not gonna volunteer to do it though.
I'm not either.
I, I don't like flying low.
And that's the thing, I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all for an general overview, but then if you see something, and you probably will, then it requires another But then, if you see something, and you probably will, then it requires another step, then it requires another step, and...
Yes, but if we fly the whole thing, we won't have to drone all of it.
Yeah.
You got one spot out here, we can take a four-wheeler out there and look at it, you can take a drone out there and take a look at it.
You can, you can.
Trying to save money.
Yeah, oh, by God.
If you do the whole county for price, it's gonna cost us for a mile or two of flying the drone.
True, but you're not gonna get the same, uh, record.
We don't need the same right away, until you know that something's moved.
Sloughing off, or they went, "Okay, we might have to fly that one." I think it's a good idea myself, but whatever you guys wanna do.
Well, it's an action op, action item.
Well, we did have a good discussion last week, too, and I think mentioned that we're trying to get some options. That's definitely a good option, it's something to think about. But I know we talked about those two districts, 11 and some two of HK, six, or whatever the heck it is up there, extension of...
Yeah, I mean, it won't take long, like you're flying a plane, 'cause you're flying along.
But if we wanna get another, we have drone footage from Jacobson Westergaard. If we wanna look at another option, I think those are two good ones, then we have that option. And if we wanna do the balance with the plane and see what that amounts to, uh, I just caution you that if you see something, it's still gonna require another step.
Yeah.
And we're not taking video with this plane.
No.
And I have flown in small planes and looked at crops and other issues, and it is a little confusing about documenting what you're looking, you know, you know what you're seeing, but where are you exactly? So by the time you get from the plane to the ground, to, "This is what needs to be looked at," uh, you, something could get lost in translation, it might be a little difficult to get to. If you're going up to look at one specific thing, one or two specific issues, it's not a big deal. But all particular spots you might see on a drainage ditch, and all the different drainage ditches we have in the county, you're, you're opening yourself up for a lot of, uh, trying to keep track of.
I kinda agree with you.
Do it the other way, let's just move on, I'm tired of beating a dead horse.
I suggest we just move forward with our...
Spending the $200 an hour, uh, $200 a mile on it, and that, to me, is money lost, but I guess we'll go that way. We've already got that done, so we can do the entire county for 600 bucks, three to five hours. We could crisscross the county, and if we see something, five, $600 as opposed to 200 bucks a, a mile, uh, to me, that doesn't make any sense. But we've already...
Need a motion one way or the other.
I make a motion that we fly, then the airplane saved, um, dodging.
Yeah, he said he volunteered to do it if he, if he wanna do it.
I think that's a good, at least a start to see. I mean, we still have, what, how many days do we have, Trish?
Till, uh, 23rd of May.
So we've got basically over 30 days yet.
We got about 30 days.
Yeah, 30 days, yeah, we got about 30, 'cause it's 22nd. If he could do it within a week...
Oh, he said he'd be back tomorrow, I'm, I...
Yeah, it'd have to be done this week.
Yeah, it'd have to be done this week.
Got a motion, I need a second for another discussion.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Um...
Time.
Yeah, um, are, are we still gonna fly, we are flying the, the drones on...
I would do those two districts, so that, and then, so we have that example.
So we wouldn't have to fly those with the plane, we would just fly the other ones.
The balance of...
The ones you're flying already, you've assigned to drone.
Yeah, there's no sense in flying a plane or...
Flying them, but the rest of them...
Basically, the west side of the county, or the southwest, Lake Two, and, and, uh, some of these down here. Well, those are being drawn, some of those, but, uh...
Team, there isn't that many flying.
I think you're right, Rick. Let's have, once we take it from Westergaard, let's get the two that we assigned to Mcclair's, and let's do the balance with the plane.
Yeah.
Then we've got our three examples.
Yeah, okay.
More pictures of you on the plane going...
I wanna bang.
Yeah.
That's, that's what happens to me when they start doing a lot of this banging stuff, and I get...
Well, when you wanna get a closer look, then you go with Phil, and you're not.
He said, for him, it's not gonna be a big deal, because he said, "I'll try to pick a day that it's not really turbulent, and we can do some low-level flying." And he says, "My plane's even got enough room if somebody big like you wants to go along it." Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Well, we're gonna designate the districts then with the plane flight.
That's what the motion is for?
Yeah.
Fly the... All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie?
I don't, I, I guess, I don't know, when, when we're up there, you're just gonna fly, he's gonna go across the county one way and then turn and go the other way, the way I understood it, and if you see something, put a knot...
Basically, you gotta get on the ditch and fly the length of the ditch.
Understand.
In order to see it, 'cause...
All right, committee report, Eric.
Thanks, Greg. Well, last week, um...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yep, said it up there by... I'm hoping to get up there sometime.
Yeah, you'll enjoy it when you do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben.
Um, on Tuesday, attended the, out at Secondary Roads Engineer's Office, uh, lunch during the training meeting. That's my one thing for last week.
Uh, Tuesday, I was out at Secondary Roads also, uh, and then after that, I went out to the landfill, met with, uh, Dave Menakis from River Engineering. Uh, they're doing their yearly report for the, um, DNR, and everything looked good. We have one little spot, gotta have a little dirt put in again. Um, I'll maybe go out with you and look that up, and, um, somebody's taking dead animals out there, throwing dead deer out there, I think to attract coyotes, would be my guess. Bait coyotes. So there's a deer carcass out there, um, but everything out there looked really good, um...
Is the pond?
Pond's staying down, so that was good. Um, have two and a half feet of...
Levelled the...
Leveld to go, yeah, so that's good. But, um, yeah, I had a good report there, so...
Awesome. I just had the Secondary Roads meeting on Tuesday. This week, I'm full, but...
Last week was my full week. Okay, I had Secondary Roads on Tuesday, and then also on the 16th, at 1 o'clock, we had the meeting for the kitty cat daycare. Um, and then Wednesday, we had, um, the county social services over at West Union, Iowa, the HR. I'm on the eight, they decided to put me on the HR committee since I have HR experience, so we had our meeting. They're still trying to get it figured out when and what we're gonna do to have one record employer, and the record employer be CSS instead of the county. So there's still a lot of, we've got it narrowed down. We had a really good discussion this time, so it's really getting, it's getting close. So we're gonna vote on it in May. We're having our quad meeting this, this week. So May is when we'll vote on what we're gonna do for the record employer, whether we're not gonna do it or not. And that was it.
Who was the other county that, the email we got?
Winnebago.
Winnebago, aye.
I'll board that all onto you guys. It's, this is all, 'cause see, the Winnebago has turned into a...
Right, that's the way I read it.
I know Webster's kinda...
And they're on the line.
They're on the fence, sort of.
Yep, yeah, I think there's just one person driving that on, I think, one or two maybe, from what I'm understanding. But they really don't know what they wanna do yet. They told, um, when we were at our last meeting, and we were at lunch, um, Carl from, um...
Right.
Right, thank you, um, was asking, uh, one of the supervisors from Webster County, what he thought, and if they thought they were gonna go that way. And he said he didn't think they were, but they were still investigating it.
I know, they're kinda, I think that we should make our own little group over here.
Right, but we don't have the numbers unless we have, and honestly, I don't, personally, I don't think we should leave CSS. They, they are actually the, the leaders of everything that's been going on in the state of Iowa. We're ready to take kids, we're a lot of the other regions, they're, and Governor Reynolds has just made that, you know, mandate that they're gonna open up to the children, zero to 21, 'cause right now it's just 21 and above. So she just opened that up. We're the only, I shouldn't say only, but we're, I'm not for sure there's one other region, but we know we're ready for, but I know there's two other regions, they're not ready to take, to do the kids. We're ready to pop right in. So I really give the leadership of that group, they really had good foresight, and they were really working on that with the mental health part of it, so... I mean, people are coming to our region asking us how we're doing things. So you know we're, we can provide our, you know, the clients, the, you know, and our constituents, good service, what they need.
Okay.
You mentioned where the meeting was, but I didn't get... West Union, it was at the, um, Bayett County Courthouse. You bet.
I was out to the safety meeting in Secondary Roads on Tuesday. 16th also went down to the workshop Iowa State University put on for the planning and zoning. There's a book on it, if anybody wants to read it, I made some notes in there. There's, it was a very good meeting. Uh, the gal that put it on went through a lot of stuff, and it's very informative, so...
Dave, did Randy get to that meeting?
I didn't see him, but I see that he did go to it.
I thought, I was gonna say, I thought he sent that.
I was clear out in the front, and I was the first one in there, so... They come in and said, "Well, you can go back out and tell that lady out there to go to the cafeteria and get you something to eat." So I did that, went back up, sat down where I was up, I got to about the third row back. It filled in, it was, I looked around once, and there was clear full behind me. They were from all over, all counties, all over the place, so... That was a good meeting, and then Thursday, I went out to the, uh, hospital. The Board of Health called us out there, we went on them home visits, and, uh, the Hope people from the state was there interviewing all of us, wanting to know what we thought, and what we thought of Hope, and how things worked, and all that stuff. So we gave them our opinions, and that's where that went. That's all the official I had. Peggy, you got anything for us?
No, I do not.
Nothing?
Oh.
Can I ask one quick thing on this whole keeping track of drainage ditches? So we had, we had talked to Mcclair's, so we are gonna do the 11 and HK, extension of HK joint two, which is that one. Then we should pretty well have everything covered.
Are you guys gonna have Mcclair do that, then?
Just those two.
Should you have a motion, then, to have them do that? I mean...
I think it's just done as a work order.
Okay, all right. 'Cause I know before, I, I can't remember on the other one, if you ask Jacobson Westergaard if there was an actual motion, or you just directed them to, to do it.
Right, Rick's right, it's not anymore the fix, really.
Yeah.
That's two of them that we've just had work done on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Gotta make sure they stayed. Anything else come for the board?
Uh, let's see. Out there by the quarry, my goodness, that road did go to pot. I mean, you were putting rocks in there that big. That's amazing.
And they, and they just disappeared?
Yeah.
They started bad, go over, go over Elsworth, Radcliffe, that area, all they use is sand and gravel and mush, and feed trucks, and you're lucky to keep from scraping your vehicle apart, huh?
Yeah.
They lean them down, and then it turns to mush. Northwest over the weekend, like O'Brien and Lion County, they're still hard surface only on their buses. They're almost, they're gravel roads, which is actual gravel, not limestone like here. Also, they just got closed, so... They got a lot more water up their way than we do, though. We got a lot of crap going in the ground over the weekend, and they don't even have the equipment out.
The roads are starting to shape up.
Ours are, yeah, ours are starting to firm up. We got, we've had all the blades out running, uh, Wednesday, Thursday last week. Our plan is to start hauling rock to the blades at the locations that they had put on the map. That's gonna be about the next probably month to six weeks, is trying to get these roads open back up that are FEMA-related, and get everything that's FEMA work done, and get rock all down the roads. Once we get done with that, then we start clipping on the work orders that I just gave Dave. We got, uh, Manats in, they started milling on Thursday.
They obviously didn't get A-29.
Nope, no, they did not, thank... Uh, they started milling, they got the first mile done, they're meeting with, uh, the railroad north of Hardy today to do that milling. Uh, plan is to possibly start paving on Wednesday.
Oh, wow.
Really?
Well, they're hoping they can get a mile a day done milling, so they'll be able to stay ahead of the paving operation.
Oh, they're gonna come right behind.
Oh, wow.
They're gonna come in right behind them, so... But the weather doesn't look good in the ten day.
Yes, it does.
Ray, who drives this week?
Okay.
Ten day, I don't look good.
Monday, Tuesday.
Looking good after today, you know.
And Saturday.
Don't be so negative.
I was just hoping after the day, it'll rain, and that's gonna work better.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's usually cracking for great.
There's a lot of seed going in the ground this weekend.
Yeah.
Should I make a motion to adjourn?
I'm ready.
All right.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, Carrie? We are adjourned, 8:39, 9:39.